Call this meeting to order. The invitation today is going to be given by Mr. Wes Hunter from Masonboro Baptist Church.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Let's pray. God, we thank you today for a beautiful day and for this wonderful place that we call home. We thank you for that, God, and we pray today for the conversation in this room, for the decisions that are made, that they might be pleasing to you, and that they might help bring your kingdom, that it might come about on earth as it is in heaven. We pray this in your name, amen.
Thank you, sir.
Place the flag.
Let us lead you to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chair, thank you. In reference to the consent agenda, I'd like to pull number five, but I'll make a motion to approve the one through four.
Second. A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Tara, I want to make it clear that I'm just interested in seeing for more information. This is not an opening of a public hearing. I just really want to see the wonderful presentation that you have put together for us.
Excellent. Thank you. Good afternoon. I hope you all are well. We'll get this pulled up in just a sec. Here we go. So here on your screen, we have the site overview of Phase Two of Smith Creek Park. Everything in blue is Phase Two, eighty-five acres. Over on the right there, you'll see the portion of the park that we will be impacting, which is about less than eight acres of the eighty-five, so less than ten percent. The other ninety percent of the parcel will remain untouched. Basically, what we are adding is an entry road off of Gordon, and that'll include forty-three parking spaces, as well as a restroom picnic shelter somewhat similar to the one that is on Phase One, a one-mile paved perimeter trail, and that'll leave all of those natural sandy trails in the interior in place that'll connect to that one-mile paved trail. And that trail will also provide ADA connection to Phase One. It'll be over on the bluff, there's actually a decent change in elevation there, so it'll be more of a switchback. So folks who utilize alternative transportation options in their daily life, wheelchair, things like that, they'll be able to access both parcels, as well as some natural play features and environmental education components as well. This picture just kind of shows you both parcels together. This is a hundred and seventy-seven acres of the hundred and seventy-seven acre parcel. You'll see both parks really impact very little footprint to both pieces. On the existing Smith Creek, it's about roughly eight acres as well, so you're looking at less than twenty acres of impact of a hundred and seventy-seven acres. So I think it's a nice balance, has creature comforts for those of us that need to use the restroom and need parking and things like that, but also does provide that balance of nature, which is the whole point of having passive parks like this. What I am asking of you today is we did open up the bids on January seventh. We received four bids, which we're very excited about. I know I've been before you many a times saying we've had one bid, so four is exciting. Timeless Construction was our lowest apparent bidder at two million, twenty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars, so I'm asking that you approve their contract today. We will post notification to the public that we will begin construction hopefully in the next thirty to forty-five days, as soon as we can mobilize. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any discussion?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tara, so what I'm seeing here is we're really opening up, frankly, what looks like a whole new park. There's certainly a doubling of the size of the existing park that is mainly, you know, filled up with a lake. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And so the people who live over on, I guess, the western, southwestern side, Gordon Road area, they'll have access to essentially a new park.
Absolutely. They'll be able to enter off of Gordon as opposed to going down Shenandoah and coming in on that side.
So more of our county residents, I'm assuming, you know, I don't have the data in front of me, that parks and open spaces are of great concern or want, I guess, of our community. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
So this is fulfilling a need for the people who live in this part of the county and making use of this space that we've owned for since 2011, is that right?
Yes, the northern portion, we purchased in 2002 and the southern portion in 2011.
And when you say we're going to be, you know, developing, you know, eight acres of the eighty-five, you really, that's the combination of, what, a five or six-foot wide path in lineal feet kind of going around. That's where you come up with that, you know, eight acres of development space, plus the minor, the small parking area and the bathroom and that little bit of development there on the right-hand side, am I?
Correct.
Right? So we're not going to pave over eight acres of this at all.
Right.
And the interior parts of the park will be left unchanged, so that the natural paths are there currently will remain.
Absolutely.
And it looks like everything to the western part there, which it looks like it might be some wetlands over there, but all that will be left completely in its natural state.
Absolutely.
To me, that looks like about a third of the entire property.
It is quite a large swath. I mean, when you add the two improvement areas together, they're a very small portion of the hundred and seventy-seven acres.
I thank you, and I know that the, literally thousands of people who live out there, who will benefit, our constituents, will thank you silently as well. I know there's been some controversy around this, but as far as I can see, this is doing exactly what the public has asked us to do, and we've responded once again. This will be our eighteenth park, if it were a new park, correct?
Correct.
You do a marvelous job, Tara, and I know you're being incredibly sensitive to all the comments that are coming in. I appreciate the hard work that you and your staff have put into this. I think it'll be a wonderful delight, another jewel in our crown, as it were.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all the comments I had.
So that's all the consent.
Oh, yes, I'd like to make a motion unless there's some other comments.
I just have one comment.
Yeah, sure.
That's for you, Chair. I just want to, I'm happy with the accessibility part of this because I know that they are dirt trails, and ideally, you know, we'd love to have everything stay natural, but this is going to open up access for not only people that have a harder time on trails like that, and I do frequent that park, so I know people like to skate, and they like to bike, and they like to do all these things, plus the bathroom being closer. I mean, if I was bringing my kids there, I probably wouldn't want to try and get to the other bathroom if I needed to in emergency, so thank you very much for being very cognizant of the nature and the natural beauty of this park.
So, and one more thing, I meant to say something about, someone in a wheelchair can go and enjoy the park?
Absolutely.
Is the bathroom eighty-eight?
It will be, yes.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I think that it's so important to recognize that while this park will serve the folks who are in immediate proximity to the park, it's really for all the people of New Hanover County and beyond. We've got to have a variety of park options, and something along these lines really fits the bill. I'm very excited that we're moving forward with this. Committe you for the work that you're doing.
Next, thank you.
Motion to appro, oh, sorry, go ahead, Lena.
Thank you. Second.
You ready?
Two seconds.
Move to a vote, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I suppose you're.
I guess all those in favor?
All everybody in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all will have to bear with me, I had to bring my glasses today. Anyway, it's the adoption of the resolution of intent for New Hanover County to participate in the North Carolina Commercial Property Assessed Capital Expenditure CPACE program. Ms. Womper.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Madeline Womper, and I'm the Sustainability Manager for New Hanover County. Today, I am presenting on Agenda Item Six, Adoption of a Resolution of Intent for New Hanover County to Participate in the North Carolina CPACE Program. This is an exciting opportunity for our community, and New Hanover County is likely to be the first jurisdiction in North Carolina to join this statewide program. CPACE stands for Commercial Property Assessed Capital Expenditure. It is a financing program designed to help commercial property owners fund projects such as energy efficiency, renewable energy, water conservation, and resiliency improvements. The key features of the CPACE program include low-cost, long-term financing, up to one-hundred percent financing of project costs, and repayment tied to property assessments. No county or taxpayer funds are used for project financing. CPACE programs have been successful and widely adopted across the country with implementation in over thirty-six states and Washington, D.C. There are many benefits of the CPACE program. For property owners, CPACE benefits include an increase in cash flow, utility bill savings, enhanced building resilience, and potential increase in property value. For New Hanover County, CPACE supports all three of the county's community-focused outcomes by promoting economic development, supporting resilient infrastructure, and improving community health and safety, all with minimal administrative burden. Several activities over the past year have prompted us to present this to you today. In July 2024, North Carolina passed Senate Bill 802 authorizing a statewide CPACE program administered by the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina. Local interest in CPACE is strong, with support from the City of Wilmington and its Clean Energy Advisory Committee, along with other local stakeholders. And county adoption of the program would allow the entire county to participate, including the City of Wilmington, who is interested in participating. And then lastly, as I mentioned in the previous slide, CPACE aligns with the county's strategic plan goals particularly relating to workforce and economic development. So there are a few key next steps to formalize New Hanover County's participation in the program. First is the adoption of the CPACE Resolution of Intent, which is before you today. The next step would be to hold a public hearing and adopt the final CPACE resolution to authorize the county's participation in the program. And then the implementation phase will begin, and the county can promote the CPACE program to ensure its benefits reach our community. So today, staff is recommending that the board adopt a resolution of intent to join the CPACE, sorry, to join the North Carolina Commercial Property Assessed Capital Expenditure Program and schedule a public hearing for this matter on February seventeenth, 2025. By adopting this resolution, New Hanover County will position itself as a leader in sustainable development, potentially becoming the first county in North Carolina to join the CPACE program. This action aligns with the county's strategic goals and demonstrates our commitment to promoting economic development and environmental stewardship. Thank you, and I'm available for questions.
Do you have questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Madeline, thank you for that and for bringing this to us. I understand that the city is also signing a similar resolution as well, so it'll be available to those people not only in the unincorporated counties, but also within the city limits.
Yes, that is correct.
Could you explain in brief how it actually works? If I have a project, I want to, say, put solar panels on top of my warehouse, my business. I apply to this through the county or through the state?
You apply through the state, the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And then they set you up with a local banker, so the banking community is also involved in this. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. They handle that correspondence.
Yeah, and then they get you the loan at below-market rate interest rates. Is that the concept?
That is the concept, yes.
Great. So this costs the taxpayer nothing?
Correct.
And so there's no part of it that is a burden on the taxpayers of New Hanover County?
That is correct.
Well, great. Sounds like a wonderful idea.
Move approval of the resolution.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's see if I read it. The next one is the New Hanover County City of Wilmington Workforce Housing Advisory Committee Annual Update. Thank you, sir.
I can try and dodge the sun if I can. Good afternoon. I'm Tom Gale, a Chair of the City and County's Joint Workforce Housing Advisory Committee. Since 2019, this committee has been charged with providing you with proposed solutions to help ensure that those that work in our community and make less than one-hundred-and-twenty percent of the area median income can also afford to live in our county. According to the Federal Housing Finance Agency, in the past seven years, median home prices in our area have gone up over eighty-five percent. Simultaneously, mortgage rates, which were roughly four and a half percent in 2018, are hovering around seven percent now. A two-hundred-thousand-dollar home in 2018 would have had a mortgage payment of just over a thousand dollars a month. That same home today would be priced at three-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars and have a mortgage payment of twenty-four-hundred dollars a month, a hundred-and-forty percent monthly increase. Unsurprisingly, renters have also shouldered a significant increase since landlord passed on these additional costs. In short, the problem we set out to tackle has only gotten more challenging, and although it's not good news that communities across the nation are facing a similar affordable housing crisis, it does give us the opportunity to see what strategies in other communities are making a meaningful impact in addressing the issue. The Workforce Housing Advisory Committee's strategic plan has two primary goals. The first is balancing housing costs with wages by making affordable housing and by making housing affordable. The second is to increase the diversity of housing available by preserving the affordability and quality of existing housing, providing reuse and redevelopment in existing communities, and building a variety of new housing types at different price points. In the past year, the City of Wilmington served over eighteen thousand individuals and committed two-hundred-and-eighty-seven units for affordable housing, while New Hanover County served three-hundred-and-eighty-one households with the gap rental assistance for workforce housing individuals and committed a hundred-and-thirty-eight units for affordable housing. Although we've accomplished a lot, the work isn't done. The North Carolina Housing Coalition reported that fifty-three percent of renters and twenty-three percent of homeowners in our community are housing cost burdened, meaning that they spend more than a third of their income on housing. Thanks in large part to the increase in construction and supply of rental units over the past few years, but expects a much smaller increase in average rental costs this year versus the last year. Unfortunately, construction of new units coming online in the next few years is expected to slow significantly, which will tighten supply and increase rents substantially again. The Workforce Housing Committee has recommendations for you in 2025 divided up into five different pathways: funding, policies and legislation, diversity of housing supply, programs, and education. The first pathway is funding. The conversation was started last year, and we want to continue developing a housing fund in conjunction with the New Hanover County Community Endowment to leverage local, federal, and private sources to help with things like land acquisition, gap financing, and pre-development costs. We also recommend continuing the Workforce Housing Services Program with at least five million dollars annually starting in 2027. The current five-year commitment of three million dollars per year for the last three years has been a huge and growing success, providing six-hundred-and-sixty-four units of affordable housing and a hundred-and-thirty-one million dollar total investment in our community, with less than nine million dollars coming from the county. This private investment doesn't include the additional applications that were turned down due to the funding limits. This is a shining example of how the county can assist private dollars to be able to provide affordable housing that they simply couldn't do without your investment and support. The second pathway is policies and legislation. We recommend continuing to include the North Carolina Housing Coalition's legislative agenda as a part of the city and county's legislative work to restore and increase the state's housing trust fund. In 2025, we recommend source of income protections on rental projects that receive special funding and rezoning requests related to housing affordability to ensure that they are followed and so developers have clear guidelines and reporting. The feedback we received from our developer roundtable last summer also recommended having more flexible parking restrictions to allow them to provide more affordable units in exchange for parking reductions for projects where the residents are less likely to require as many parking spaces. The next pathway is diversity of housing supply. In 2024, you held a joint city and county elected roundtable discussion with both planning boards to remove barriers to housing diversity and affordability. I would request that the Workforce Housing Advisory Committee be invited to your next joint meeting so we can be a resource for you during that conversation. For 2025, we had developers requesting potential reductions to the lot size required for smaller multifamily projects in the downtown area where infill lots might accommodate. We also suggest that the city and county actively support the land trust model of homeownership, which will increase the economic diversity in the neighborhoods over the longer term. We recommend that the city and county provide funding and land allocations for organizations providing multifamily and supportive housing for those exiting homelessness. The fourth pathway is programs. Over the last few years, ARP and opioid settlement dollars have been used to help various housing stability programs in our community and have been critical in our recent success in closing the gap on housing affordability. But as those federal and state dollars go away, the need is as great as ever. Therefore, we encourage local funding be allocated to be able to continue these programs that are already in place. In addition, we suggest that the county look into potentially expanding or replicating the city's homeownership pool loan program to the rest of the county. We also recommend that the county notify the small group of homeowners that qualify for tax relief program and assist them with their applications so they can more easily afford to stay in their homes. Similarly, we suggest that the county provide a staff member to provide tenant and landlord education and investigate fair housing complaints as some other communities provide. Last pathway is education. The 2024 recommendation for a dedicated county webpage to be a clearinghouse for affordable housing services and issues is an unfinished priority for 2025. In addition, the committee is working on what will hopefully be an annual affording, affordable housing summit between all area stakeholders, because there are tremendous opportunities to learn, share, and collaborate when we're all in the same room. Launching a public education campaign remains a priority so the community more clearly understands that this is an issue that truly affects everyone and our quality of life. To many in our community, they think that they're protecting property values by preventing projects with a diversity of price points or increased density, when actually the opposite is true. Currently, over fifty-two thousand people communicate, commute into our county to work every day, which increases traffic on our roads. If these people could live closer to where they work, the traffic problem is significantly reduced, but the bigger issue is ensuring that we don't lose our critical workforce. The area median income has gone up fifty percent in the last five years, but this is not due to fifty percent wage increases. It's a function of many of our lower and middle-income residents being displaced. While it's great that we're attracting high-paying jobs, it's tremendously important that the public understand why it's in their best interest that nurses, police officers, teachers, retail workers, waitstaff, and others have a place to call home here, too, because once they've relocated out of our community, trying to create solutions then to bring them back becomes significantly harder. Let me close by saying thank you to each of you for your leadership and vision. Over the last ten years, but predominantly in the last five years, our county and city have invested over eighty million dollars in various housing affordability initiatives, which made notable strides in keeping people in their homes and putting more affordable units on the ground in the face of stifling headwinds. A few of those recent success stories are Haven Place, Canopy Point, and Estrella Landing, with other projects like Avenue Flats and Pearson Point currently in production. The Workforce Housing Advisory Committee looks forward to continuing to be a resource to you in the years ahead. Thank you, and I'll take any questions.
Thank you, sir. Anyone have anything?
Tom, thanks. Wonderful work. And could, are there other members of the task force here? Could they please stand up and be recognized? Thank you all for the excellent work that you've done in advising us. I really appreciate it, and I know you've all reached out at one time or another for private conversations, and I encourage you to continue doing that and to continue your work. Thank you. Tom, I'd like to go back to one of your recommendations in the diversity in housing supply. I recognize, it's basically your first bullet point on the right-hand side is increasing density, which I know we all need. Could you just say a few words about your philosophy or your thoughts on how we balance that with green space and open space, which is another, it seems like they're at odds? Personally, I don't think it can be, but I'd love to hear your thoughts on that.
So, yeah, one of the things that was actually mentioned at our developer roundtable last summer by one of the developers was trying to create a more regional approach for stormwater management and parks and things like that, because I agree, I think that we need to have a more comprehensive approach. I'm not suggesting, as we are to, that we should develop every square inch. I think that we need to balance that, but I do think that we need to have smart growth, and some of that does mean higher density, because, again, I think to serve these people in particular, you know, a condo or something for a young professional is, you know, more suits them than a single-family home or things like that, so.
Thanks, Tom.
Yeah.
Again, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Just a comment. Thank you for that report and the work that you and your committee have done. I know it's not a, it's not an easy topic to figure out, because we've been trying for quite some time, but thank you for the presentation, and I appreciate the hard work.
Thank you.
Hey, Tom, thank you so much for that presentation. I'm definitely in favor of having a summit or whatever, you know, want to call it with everybody, because, I mean, the fact of the matter is, like, to your point about housing prices, the only example I had is a house that I think we purchased in ninety-seven that was like eighty-seven thousand, and it just sold for the fifth time for probably about what you just said. That's eleven-hundred-square-foot home, and that was considered a starter home back then. So there's definitely, the gap has to be closed somehow, either, I mean, all these things that you mentioned are definitely important, but they have to be closed, because I know a lot of teachers, like to your point, go and move elsewhere because they can't afford it, which, you know, it may be okay for now, but, you know, we saw what happened with the big rain event in Brunswick County where roads were closed, so, and it will have a real effect on our economy here, so I would like to see that as well. It's complicated, definitely.
It is. Well, and that goes back to, again, supporting the private industry, because they have, again, they can't deliver eleven-hundred-square-foot home and turn a profit, so that's where the government needs to help these people that are trying to do the right thing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
All right, thank you.
Discuss this further. All right, that's the end of the regular meeting. Now we have some folks that wanted to speak. Bear with me now, because I can't, can we get one?
Sorry, the chair has had an eye procedure. He's not seeing real well today, so I'm his eyes.
Pris Endo?
Pris Endo.
Ms. Endo, and everybody else who signed up, you have three minutes. I believe there's a clock right there in front of you, but when it gets to ten seconds, I'll remind you, okay?
I'm looking for the clock. Oh, I see it.
Because we can't go over.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Pris Endo. I live at Middle Sound. Since 2011, when I retired to New Hanover County, every commission meeting I have attended has had at least one agenda item focused on development and the irreparable effect that overdevelopment coupled with climate change is having on our ecosystem. I speak tonight about last month's agenda item, Sledge Forest, a buy rights purchase exempt from a public hearing and exempt from approval by the county commission. How can buy rights of out-of-town developers override the quality of life of the residents in Castle Hain? Four thousand homes on a thousand acres, including a golf course and commercial development, another thirty thousand cars per day on the already crowded Castle Hain Road, and located adjacent to a hazardous waste site at GE that is being monitored, managed for public safety. Many citizens in New Hanover County are dismayed with the Many citizens in New Hanover County are dismayed with the development patterns that are destroying our quality of life. We are looking for leadership from elected officials to stem this degradation. How can we accomplish that if the commission does not change the rules that the planning board has to follow? How can we accomplish that if the state overrides protections for wetlands through the North Carolina Farm Act of two thousand and twenty-three and the Sackett decision by the Supreme Court? The heart of the matter is, I quote, "It is our collective responsibility to preserve and tend to the world in which we live. We are well aware of what happens when we don't, and all signs now are that it might be too late for life as we know it to be preserved." The commission, as I understand it, tried to put Sledge Forest in conservation for future generations when the property came up for sale but did not have sufficient funding. Is purchase of buy rights property the only recourse the commission has? Revisions are now being made in the UDO. Can the commission instruct the planning board to change the buy rights laws, and will you pursue these changes as the UDO is understudying now? Or are there funds available for conservation in the one point two billion sale of the hospital, the New Hanover County Endowment? After Hurricane Florence, I saw a twelve-foot flood line on the trees along the northeast Cape Fear north of Castle Hain. Is Sledge Forest facing that kind of flooding with an ex hurricane, even though the four thousand homes will not be located in wetlands? Sledge Forest is a development disaster waiting to happen. Is there nothing we can do about it? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next is Andy Wood.
Thank you for allowing me this time to speak with you. Andy Wood from Hampstead, Pender County, but representing a couple, few thousand acres in New Hanover County that I help manage for land trusts and private landowners. The point I want to make, I'm not going to read my blather, the point I want to make regarding Sledge Forest in particular is related to infrastructure that does not exist to support a hoped-for subdivision on a thousand acres of essentially long-leaf pine habitat containing the last oldest long-leaf pine in New Hanover County. The challenge that you've heard before from several of us relates primarily to traffic on an F-rated Castle Hain Road, which won't be able to handle an additional thirty thousand vehi, excuse me, vehicles each day without some complication. But my real point comes down to economics. We are subsidizing the profits of developers by the way we allow infrastructure to be paid for by taxpayers to support development that does not yet exist. So as example with Sledge Forest, the developer might hope to make twenty thousand dollars profit on each house that they build. That's really conservative. If they build four thousand homes, that's eighty million dollars in profit to the developer. That eighty million dollars doesn't circulate through our local economy. That goes into their pocket and out of our county, leaving taxpayers to pay for the schools, health services, emergency services, expanded highways, all of which we don't really know what the needs will be to cover all of that, because with the buy right development, you don't have an opportunity to question the developer about how many people are coming to your subdivision with how many school kids? How many of your buyers are senior citizens requiring senior healthcare services? We don't know that information. So approving this development of four thousand homes without knowing how much it's going to cost current county taxpayers just seems like that's upside-down planning and maybe not in the best interest of being the model of good governance. And so just please consider the cost of infrastructure on current residents before approving new development for non-residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Stephen Axton?
Hello, commissioners. My head's kind of spinning because I think you just took an item off of the consent agenda and then voted on it anyway and approved the budget as it was presented, which seems highly irregular to me. If that's the case, if I understood it correctly, it was an ill-advised and possibly unlawful choice to approve the consent agenda regarding Smith Creek Park Phase Two, as that approval will lead to the commencement of construction that has not been legally or properly noticed to the public. While the request for board action references visioning sessions and public meetings regarding, quote, "potential elements of the new section of the park," unquote, the NOI for this specific plan filed on October second, two thousand and twenty-nine, was required to be noticed to the public by detailed signage and plans at the entrances to the park, noticed by first-class posts to residents within a specific radius of the project. I certainly did not get that notification, nor did the residents I spoke to yesterday at forty-seven thirty-three, forty-seven thirty-eight, forty-nine, forty-one, forty-seven forty-two, forty-seven forty-six, forty-seven fifty, and forty-seven fifty-eight, Duplo Drive. Nobody saw any signage, nobody got anything in the mail. It also must be published in newspapers that include the project description, location, applicant information, hearing dates, and contact details for further inquiries. This did not happen. Regarding the visioning and public comment two thousand and twelve, two thousand and twenty-three mentioned in the summary, and which I received from Parks and Gardens this morning, the two thousand and twelve documents are irrelevant because it was an entirely different plan and no data or comments accompanied it anyway. The two thousand and twenty-three information shows that thirty-seven people attended a meeting at a park shelter. No data or comments are included from that. Twenty-nine people were commented on social media. No data or comments were provided about that. A hundred and twenty-eight people were surveyed online, and the data is that twenty of a hundred and twenty-eight people, that's fifteen point six percent, wanted more parking. Twenty-eight of a hundred and twenty-eight people, that is twenty-one point nine percent, wanted another picnic shelter. Eighteen of a hundred and twenty-eight people, that's fourteen point one percent, wanted paved walking trails. And Rob, I just want to point out that that area is open and being used right now. They're not opening something new for anyone. The final page of the document includes this quote, quote, "They did not know, those who did not know about the preserve had strong feelings about keeping it as natural as possible," unquote. Commissioner Zapple said in the previous meeting, I assume this is, this is data-driven. It obviously is not. If you look at the numbers from them, they don't have the people who want this, they have the people who don't want this. The Save Smith Creek Park Preserve petition currently has four hundred and fifty-eight verified signatures. Commissioner Scalise, they are not all from the neighborhood, they're from all over the area, so this is not like a NIMBY deal we're trying to act on. It's because people don't want this. Where the signatures are asking you to halt this project pending proper and legally replied.
Sir, your time's up.
I have twenty-two seconds.
Now, that's twenty-two seconds over.
Oh, I apologize.
I'm sorry.
Thank you for hearing me.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Next is Kathy Finley.
Thank you so much for letting me have this opportunity to talk to you about Smith Creek I hike that area every day. I'm using the word hike. I'm not walking, I'm hiking. I'm wearing my hiking boots. I see runners and walkers and a ton of people out there. It isn't new, it's old, and we cherish it. I do live in the Smith Creek Apartments. I walk right on my door into nature, and this county is full of cement, it's full of asphalt, and it gets so old. We have an opportunity to preserve a very, and it's small, it's only eight acres, eight very small acres of joy for so many people who use the unpaved portion. Many people use the paved portion. I hate it. It's hard on my shins, it's hard on my knees, it's hard on my back, and I'm grateful we have a paved portion because then anyone has access to nature. So we have provided plenty of space for anybody wanting to enjoy nature, but we, what we aren't giving the people is nature for those who can get out in it and hike and enjoy it. I implore you, could we please put a pause on this project until we actually look at what's going to happen to the trees in that area? Once you pave, and depending how wide you make it, you are going to kill, and I think I'm going to be conservative here in saying over a thousand trees. This morning, when I just found out about all this, this is all new to me, but I went out and I hiked the one portion that me and my grandson loved to hike on, and in that, it can't be more than a hundred and fifty yards, a football field, a little more. I counted a hundred and sixteen trees. Now, where I come from in Iowa, the DNR went through a camping area, cut down hundreds of trees. We were upset, and they said, we have to. We're widening the path. Anything within so far of this path will die. We are cutting them down because we're not going to come back and cut down dead trees. What is the environmental impact that this paved path, which if you notice, goes around the park? I dare you to go walk that tonight. It's going to be beautiful tomorrow. Go out and walk that perimeter, and you tell me how many trees are going to be gone. In some places, the path isn't that wide. If you take your family out and you're three wide.
Time's up. I'm sorry.
If you take that and you're three wide, you have to crunch to gather how many trees are going to go down. Yeah, I know, we can replant. I know you can beautify it.
Ma'am, your time is up, ma'am.
But once you take away, it's going to be really hard to bring back. Please preserve that park. Thank you so much for your time.
Yes, ma'am. Anything, sir? Okay, any discussion, anybody else? This meeting is adjourned.